Tonight is a hosted planning board meeting. In case we have a quorum of members here, we do not currently. If we get a quorum of members, I may pause to open a planning board meeting. And that's just so that way the planning board members can talk to each other without like accidentally breaking open meeting law somehow, or even people being worried about us breaking open meeting law. Sometimes it's not about practice, it's about making everyone come in. I'm gonna tell you before we start, if you're used to me presenting at a town meeting or at planning board, I mean, I'm only so formal to start with, but I'm gonna tell you that I love being interrupted. Before this, I was a public high school teacher, I've been a corporate trainer, I've been a tech writer. If you have a question, let me know, we'll try to, we'll address it right away. If it's something we can't address right away, or I'm getting to another slide, I'll tell you. Okay? I love interruptions, you have to be like, ooh, do I have to wait? You've got the cards and pens and everything, so if you have a question, don't want to ask, don't want to forget, write it down. Anything you write down that you want me to take as feedback to the planning board, I will. We're also being recorded tonight, so anything you say will also get me there for feedback to the planning board. But sometimes it's easier to write something than speak it out loud. We're gonna go through the presentation, and then depending upon the feeling of the group, there's a couple exercises we could do, or we can just chat, whatever works for the group as a whole. I presented long enough, I'm not worried about it. But I wanted to kind of give you that lay of the land. We're here tonight to talk about the MBTA Communities Bylaw, and let's dive right in. So, what we're gonna talk about tonight, we're gonna talk about, well first, why does the MBTA Communities Bylaw exist? We're gonna talk about what do we need to do to comply with it? And for those planners in the audience, I'm going to be playing light with them. There's a bunch of technical, there's a lot of technicalities under the hood. We're gonna talk about what really matters for the context of this meeting. What will the impact be on the town? And that includes this kind of hanging question, what happens if we choose to thumb our nose at the state and say, nah, we're not gonna do it? It's a choice we can make, we'll see what the results of that could be. We're gonna talk about where in town we're looking at that zoning. And that's gonna be 131 White Street, 129 Rogers Way, that's the Whalen Luxury Apartments land, 40 Lonestor Shirley Road, and 37 Young's Way, that we all know as Trittown. And then we're gonna talk about different paths to compliance. Because just because these are the four areas that our consultants looked at, that doesn't mean our option is one of those four. There's some complications there, and some neat things we did there. But first, we're gonna talk about why does MBTA Communities as a law exist? And that kind of nebulous question, do we really need more housing? And again, don't hesitate to interrupt me. Why does MBTA Communities exist? Well, the answer is, in Massachusetts, we have a bunch of single-family homes. And we all, we live in Lunenburg, we all know what this looks like, right? They could be on large or small lots, but it's a single-family home. And actually, maybe they tend to cost a lot of money, increasingly so in this day and age. Now, Massachusetts, not necessarily Lunenburg, has a lot of dense housing as well. Think those big apartment buildings. And, I mean, they're denser, they tend to be more affordable. I always hate using the word affordable with planning things, because affordable housing is a technical term, but they tend to be more affordable for your average person. What the state does not have a lot of is a lot in the middle, between that really expensive, single-family homes and the more affordable, super-dense apartments. And you could think of this, tend to be on small lots, multifamilies, condos often fall into this. And they tend to be priced in between, right? So, we don't have a lot in the middle. And the MBTA Communities Bylaw is designed, or law, is designed to hit this missing middle. And this is a graphic that the MRPC, the Regional Planning Agency, uses. But you've got that whole duplex, townhouses, courtyard buildings, you've got this range. But I think one thing we're probably all very well aware of is the middle for Lunenburg is not the middle for Massachusetts. This isn't playing nice. I have that cute up low. There we go. The middle for Lunenburg is not the middle for Massachusetts, right? We're all the way on that left-hand side. And even our duplexes, if we're gonna be real, for most of the parts of the state this law applies to, they're not talking about a duplex on a minimum one or two acre lot. Two, like, two, a duplex on one acre lot is a half acre lot effectively, and that's still, further east of here, that's, I mean, that's open. So, we have, we have some more dense, right? We've got the, what's the big, what's that big apartment complex by my alone?
Arrive.
Oh, it is Arrive, thank you. We have more dense, and even that isn't that dense once you take into account the townhouses around it. This isn't working for me tonight, I never liked it anyway. So, do we really need more housing in Lunenburg, or in general? In the region, we've kind of all seen it, right? The demand for housing super-outstretched supply. And if you're lucky enough to be a homeowner in town, you've seen it, because your home has made you a whole bunch of imaginary money. It's imaginary just because it's in the house, it's locked up, right? But our homes have gone up in value substantially. When my wife and I bought our current house in 2018, we were like, well, stinks to buy at the top of the market. We were wrong. Keeps going up, and that's because there isn't enough housing. This is about the housing crisis, as they say. I thought it hadn't worked. I dislike it just because I don't like standing in the corner. But, this is all super-back-of-napkin numbers, okay? So, if you're gonna say, well, technically, yeah, technically, you're probably right. This is just for illustrative purposes, and it's within the right ballpark, okay? In Lunenburg, an average home costs over half a million dollars. Rental, average in Lunenburg, little over $3,500 a month, okay? Your average household income in town is $112 best. Now, what you gotta understand is traditionally, they say, your house in general shouldn't be more than 2.8 times your annual, your household income. Using the averages, we're five times. If you're renting, you don't want to be above 30% at the absolute max. We're at 38%. We have a lot more demand for housing than we have supply. That's not just Lunenburg, that's the whole central and eastern part of the state. But there is a need for housing. And the thing I really want you to understand is, housing's gonna be developed one way or another, okay? In general, housing is a by right use. Your own land, you can cut it up to whatever minimum size is appropriate and put houses on it. That may or may not be economically feasible, but when you look at the cost, it's a lot easier to justify right now. So, does that mean that choosing to build a lot of housing under MBTA Communities is the right choice for town? Maybe, maybe not, there's arguments both ways. But we need to understand that if we're not active about housing choices, and maybe MBTA Communities, it's not the way to go about it, we have some options there. But if we're not active about housing development, about how we want houses to be developed in town, is by right, it's gonna happen anyway. We can't stop it, and so what we're really talking about is, are these good options, or do we want to think about other options going forward? So, we talked about why the law exists, what do we need to do to be in compliance? And since we're a rural town, next to a town, well, next to three towns with MBTA stations, so that doesn't matter, once the state does out the math and all their equations, it falls out that we need to zone for 240 additional units of mid-density housing in town, okay? It doesn't, now, zoning, that doesn't mean we have to build. If no one ever builds these, that's fine, but we have to zone to allow this mid-density housing. And in Lunenburg, we don't really allow much mid-density housing at all. Water and sewer are not required at the location, there was some discussion how the state was gonna land on that, and in the end, water and sewer does not have to be available at the location, but we can't ignore things that make the law unbuildable, wetlands being the big obvious one, okay? Part of it, you can't put houses on, we don't get to count it towards the zoning, even if it's in the zone. And to be frank, our timeline to compliance is aggressive. We've had a hard time keeping planners in the office for the past couple years, that impacts it. We're fine, but we do need to move.
What's the deadline?
What's that?
Is the deadline?
Oh, the deadline is the turn of the year, is January 1st, or end of December to 2026. We're gonna be fine for that, but it does mean we need to be active in our choices. So, this week, we're having a couple info sessions, soliciting feedback. Next week, the planning board is gonna vote on what path we're gonna choose for compliance. And at that meeting, will be your final chance for public feedback. After June 23rd, we hand it off to Community Scale, the contractor we hired with grant money to handle this for us. And what they're gonna do is, whatever option we choose, they're gonna draft a bylaw to meet that needs, and, here's the biggie, they're gonna make sure ahead of time the state will accept it. You may have heard about communities not getting their MBTA Communities Bylaw accepted by the state. Community Scale is gonna make sure we're doing it right and wrapped up tightly. In the early fall, they'll come back to the planning board and say, hey, here's the bylaw with the option you chose. And like for any bylaw, the planning board will have to have a public hearing. I'll be real, editing it at that, because sometimes you can do amendments and stuff. Editing it at that point means the state might no longer take it, so we'd have to be real thoughtful. That's why we have these conversations now and send it to the experts. And then mid-November, we'll have a special town meeting, the town will vote, hopefully to adopt whatever bylaw, because if we don't, we won't be in compliance. So, what's the impact on the town, and what happens if we refuse? So, the thing to understand, again, this is a zoning bylaw. Eventually, whatever we zone, eventually we could see it built. If you zone it, they may come, they may show up, but depends what we zone and how aggressive we are with that. Doesn't mean it happens overnight. You can't just overnight start building a huge development. We zone it, there's still be time. Now, another possible outcome, if we choose to add more mid-density housing, or zone for more mid-density housing, and if developers choose to develop it, this could actually limit demand for housing in other parts of town, for adding houses that may, that might slow down development in other areas. Is that worth it? It's a gamble, but it's worth, again, everything's a gamble, it's worth understanding. Here's the biggie, the biggest complaint I hear, and I know, because I was one of the biggest proponents of this argument. What about our schools? MBTA Communities requires that we are building, that we're zoning, we're building, yes, we're not building, that we're zoning and allowing these family-friendly units. I've got good news. Remember that missing middle picture with Lunenburg all the way on the left? And saying that just because it's the middle for, the state doesn't make it the middle for Lunenburg? You go out to Newman, you go out to Watertown, and that middle-density housing is super-family friendly. People don't move to Lunenburg to raise their kids on 15 units in acre. It's not that it couldn't, it will some come in short, but other towns that have done this and have this kind of development, when they're in our shoes, they see that we don't have this crazy influx to the schools. You can't say there'll be no impact, you have housing, there could always be. But we're not talking about necessarily this huge impact in the schools, you might see out in Metro West. So, unless we get really aggressive with what we want, I don't think the town's going there, but I've been surprised, unless we get really aggressive overall, any changes we see are likely outside the very localized area of that development to be small and gradual. There's a lot of panic about this by law, and I understand it, but as we're seeing how it falls out, for us, less of an issue. Remember, zoning isn't the same as building, and we have a couple options to take advantage of that. Can we just say no? This is top-down from the state, there's wonderings if this council is an unfunded mandate, can we thumb our nose at the state or actively reject? And Milton tried that for us. And if you look at the headlines at first, it's like, Milton wins against the state, well, they won a very small component based on the process the state followed. The state won everything else, so talk to town council about this, okay? And all the state has to do with Milton is redo that one process point, and everything's then required. So, if we were to fight the state in court, that's a lot of money, and we're very likely going to lose. But good old carrot and stick, the state says if we don't comply, they will start denying us grant monies. So I guess it's take away the carrot and the stick, it's like worse. And the state has made clear, they're being nebulous about it, but that they would involve the AG's office, Attorney General's office, with towns that refuse to comply. Could we get sued to force compliance? Yes, will we be? The state's playing coy about that, but they've kind of indicated they're playing coy because they don't want to say yes. They'd rather we were doing it, and they'll make this if we have to. So, choosing to not comply, it is certainly a way to make a statement. That is a way to turn to the state and say, we don't appreciate this, and we're willing to get hit because we don't appreciate it. We have, if the goal is just to not add this kind of housing to town, or at least in this way, we have other options. If we want to make that statement, that's something we could. I would personally really advise us, we don't gain anything from it.
I also think, should we, you used the word, what's the phrase, an unfunded mandate? That's a legal term of art in state, and there was about a dozen communities that also sued the state saying that this wasn't an unfunded mandate, and they were summarily marched out of court in different groups based on the argument. So, the courts are upholding that it isn't an unfunded mandate because it is an exercise in zoning, not a requirement to construct.
There we go. For those who don't know, I have heard him, he was our town planner for a number of years, he knows a finger tip, or like, thousand, so. Again, not that we can't, I would not recommend it. But where are we talking about doing this? Where would we zone? Well, from Community Scale, they've given us four locations, three of which were, and, or could, but I'll tell you the first one, not so much. But we can play with those a little bit. So, the four locations are gonna be, again, 131 White Street, that's senior housing, 37 Young's Road is Trittown, Rogers Way is the Whalen Luxury Apartments, and 40 Lonestor Shirley Road is some undeveloped industrial land. Yeah, it's all kind of on the western side of town, because that's the part of town that can take that kind of development. But, does that mean we're foisting everything on the same locations we traditionally have? Not necessarily, if we choose to zone, we have options. Let's talk about 131 White Street, and I'm gonna tell you, we don't want, I'm not gonna, when we talk about our options at the end, this one isn't included. Because it is currently age-restricted housing and controlled by the housing authority. For us to consider using this land would require additional bylaw changes, or some, I don't know every detail of how it's done, but there's multiple legal steps that understandably, the housing authority and several of our residents who are in that age group, or who like people who are in that age group, wouldn't, wouldn't want to see us zoned away. It was included, and this is where that local knowledge is necessary, because getting this to a quantity can contribute? No. It's not that we can't talk about it, but I'm gonna tell you, the path to using it would be real hard when we had better options. I just wanna use this by the way, you'll see I talk about usable land. For most, and this, for all these, this is real close to the total land. I'm not, because like, the total land for this zone is like 5.2 acres, but you can see that white around the edges is wetland, so it's only 4.92 usable acres. Because again, it has to be legal to build there, so.
What was the criteria that the consultant used to select these locations? Because if this one's not eligible for the allocation, why would it be?
I didn't hear that.
The question was, what was the criteria the consultant used to pick these locations? This is where I'm gonna be frank, I have so much knowledge on this, because our previous town planner began this process. No, not I. Since he knew who works for the town, I had to jump in. I tried steering the consultant towards, so, the consultant, I was under the impression from our initial talks, was looking at a more narrow range of options in town, assuming the town definitely wanted to go in certain directions. I was emphatic this was not the case, and said, hey, I'd like you to look at some of these other parcels based on recommendations from Massachusetts Regional Planning Mission. I don't know where this one came from, to be frank. I don't think, if it wasn't any of them, it wasn't as a main reference. But with the time crunch we're under, because of the turnover of the previous planner and other issues, that we have to work with what we have.
So it sounds like we don't know enough. Because it really sounded like a good plan.
So, again, I want to be real careful here, because Community Scale, whenever I talk to the planners I've talked to, when I say we're working with Community Scale, they say, oh, good. The answer has usually been, oh, good, like, this all. So, I can't tell you where they got this info from. The good news is, if this was a mission-failing thing that was gonna screw us up, I wouldn't care a whole lot. We have some really good options, and if I were a betting man, I think I, I know where I would put money on the town choosing to go in the end. And this does not impact it one bit.
Yeah, my question wasn't specifically targeted to this location, just like I wanted like a mind frame of where these coming from.
This is the one I'm not as sure on. White Street, not sure on. Trittown, direct recommendation from MRPC, because we have the option there to take credit for work we did establishing that 40R district like 15 years ago, okay? Rogers Way was also included in MRPC's recommendations. 40 Lonestor Shirley Road was not, I don't think that was originally in MRPC's recommendations, but kind of fell out from the previous planner looking and going, wait a minute, this is not a bad location. And simultaneously, by happenstance, the owner of that property, being aware of MBTA Communities, reached out to him independently and said, I think I have land that could be good for this. And, yeah, if we want to develop, with, frankly, it is. And we'll look at walk, because it's a little different than we normally do, but that makes it good in some ways. That's where these recommendations come from. Fair question, I mean, straight-up good question. Let's talk about Trittown. Little over nine acres, but Trittown is built out. If you hear people talk about paper compliance, that means you're zoning something that is highly unlikely to actually be built. And I really liked it when our consultant pointed out that people talk about paper compliance like it's a scurrying system. What it actually is, is getting credit for the thoughtful housing work we already done in town. So, the thing to understand is, Trittown is already zoned at 22 units in acre. When it was built, it was only built to about 14 units in acre, because that's what the demand was.
I think those numbers are off too, I think there's 204 acres there.
I could double-check that.
Because the 131 is the four-family buildings, and they built the L-shaped senior building, which took them up to, it might be 194, it's up closer to 200.
Okay, thank you, and that's good, because that brings it, okay, that makes sense, because I thought it was memory? Okay, thank you. And that's good because that brings it, okay, that makes sense because I thought it was memory. I'm going, I swear it was at 17 units an acre, not 14, but when I did the math relating this, it said 14. And I'm like, okay, I must have misremembered. No, that's good. The point being that Trittown is our paper compliance option. We could leave Trittown alone and get credit for almost everything if we just said, yeah, Trittown's being something this way or included. If we bump Trittown up to 26 units an acre. Now, it wasn't economic to build it up to 22. The difference, to redevelop and get rid of what's there, because you think, what about the people who live there? You don't want to mess up their lives and that's fair. For it to be economically feasible to make that small jump, someday it could be. It wouldn't be today. I mean, maybe in 20 years, maybe. And how different, think of this town from 2005 to today. How different is it going to be in 20 years? It's going to be a different ballpark anyway. But we have the option to use Trittown to our advantage because we did it 15-ish years ago. And that's, we've been forward-thinking. You've heard this from me a few times recently, right? The ADU bylaw was another one. If we're looking ahead for housing, when these changes come, we don't get hit. It's not so hard. Rogers Way, look, if we wanted to say, if we wanted to go all in MBTA communities and say, "We want a lot of medium-density housing", boom, great, great choice, okay? That's a lot of land that can make a lot of houses. Even if you discount the apartment area that's already there, there's a lot of option. The advantage of this location is it's, it's the place we usually, it's one of the kind of places we usually put this dense stuff over by Whalen, right? The disadvantage of this location is, it's the place, one of the places we always do this kind of stuff over by Whalen. You're gonna, you're gonna build and do these things where there's resources and where there's the infrastructure and that's one of the places we have. Some people I've talked to from Whalen are like, "Yes, bring on the development." Some, I would argue more, don't feel so comfy about it. But it's an option we have. And again, zoning doesn't mean it gets built. It's a good location because if it got built up, Whalen Road, that Rogers Way spits out onto, already a busy road. We're not taking a bunch of traffic and putting it on some rural side streets that are going to have problems. 40 Lemister Shirley Road is in our industrial zone. Right there, I mean, we're talking, when I say in the corner of town, over this green line is Lemister and over this green line is Lancaster. So, corner town. I'm the last person who's ever going to turn to you and say, "Let's take some good industrial land and put houses on it." Turns out, this is a good industrial land. I had a good discussion with the owner, who's owned it for 25 years and been looking to sell it for about 25 of those years. And, modern industrial, for the use that you're going to have, you need nice flat topography, okay? To get this site flat enough for industrial use would require about 3 million yards of fill. Not feasible. The cost isn't there. If it isn't a good industrial land, well, we could do denser housing here. So Lemister Shirley Road, we're not adding, it's already a busy road and we're not adding a ton of traffic to the rest of town. Alternatively. So if we want to develop, this could be real good. Alternatively, it's real good for all sorts of development. MBTA communities effectively does not allow mixed-use development. Like you can, that's a very small portion thereof, it effectively doesn't allow it for our purposes. This is a site in a part of town that could really benefit from some mixed-use development. One of, instead of dense housing, it was dense housing above retailing restaurants. On a road that connects to two other towns and a lot that directly borders a third, that people can still get to pretty easy from the rest of town. It's not a bad place to put houses in my, this is one man's opinion. Might be a better place to put housing and some more tax-generating stuff in the long run. But, it is a good place. If we wanted dense housing that isn't going to impact the character of town in any conceivable way, it's hard to get much better than that for us. That's why I like it for other uses too. Finally, our paths to compliance. How are we going to get to compliance? I'm going to show you four options, but these aren't the only options we have. You could kind of do your math and figure out however you want, but these are the four, I think, easiest. The easiest, take Trittown, bump it up to four units per acre on the total, right? That isn't a big, you're talking a 20% increase to the density that's already zoned, less actually, done. We've met the requirements. Could it be redeveloped? Sure. Will it be? Probably not for a long time. Alternatively, if we want to develop, if we want to actively add, use MBTA communities as a reason to add mid-density housing, as we had said earlier, we don't have a lot and there is kind of a need for it. For those of us with kids, are, are kids going to be able to afford to live in Lunenburg? Not right now, at least not till they're middle-aged or something as well. But this could be a way to move in that direction. Downside eliminates it from other options. Rogers Way is another fine choice. Again, Lemister Shirley Road, Rogers Way, you talk about 15 units an acre or more. You could build 20 units an acre, no problem. But, that could be a lot of houses. We can limit it. We can put a limit, okay, to meet our needs. So just because all of Rogers Way could hold 556 units does not mean we need to zone for all 556 units. And again, the advantage, this is kind of the traditional location inchores. If we want to get clever. We could keep Trittown the way it is. If we didn't want to risk increasing the appeal of redeveloping Trittown, I don't think that's a big risk. But if you do, we could keep Trittown exactly how it is. And that's going to get us about 200 units. And then, we just need to add additional zoning capacity for about 40 units. I think it's 38 technically, but about 40 units at Rogers Way. We could also add that zoning option at Lemister Shirley Road for a bit extra. I'm not convinced that's the best use of that land, but you might be. So we've got four kind of easy options to compliance. But we could use something else. Can we pick an entirely different parcel? At this point, no. If there is a part of town who's saying, "But Matt, this would be ripe for denser development." And I think that some areas that could really handle that give benefit to the town and not harm that, that country feel we like. The solution to that is pick, in my opinion, pick paper compliance and then we can look at other options. In part because, it seems to understand, MBTA communities is not affordable housing by design. This doesn't help us hit our affordable housing goals that we're required to hit. This is aimed at mid-density at that mid-acre is what they're going for. So, some of those other areas that can handle density, might be able to handle density with a component of affordability that could be beneficial. By the way, the reason we can use Trittown as a 40R district, many towns cannot use their 40R districts because they're new. Ours is old enough that we're allowed to use it even though it's 25% affordable, which is pretty great. So again, that paper compliance means that even if it did get redeveloped, we get to kick up our affordable housing portion along with it. So these are the options. If we want, I can walk us through some exercises to make sure we share our thoughts. I'm also happy just for people to start speaking and share their opinions. And please, if you have a thought, speak it out loud or write it down. Write it down in those note cards. We'll collect it because this is all feedback that goes back to the planning board. Because ultimately, it's the planning board that decides which option we're going with and the town that validates it at town meeting. So if you're thinking something, but you don't write it or say it, we're not going to know it. And the problem is people who feel differently make it very loud and then we think everyone's dealing with it. So that's going to start us just speaking and sharing our thoughts and then we want, we need to get some exercises we can.
I think. Yeah, just a question, can, can you do like dual use, like having, you have like the restaurants on the bottom floor or same job?
No, that's the mixed-use development and it's.
It's incredibly challenging.
Yeah.
Limited percentages, there's limited amount, have to allow first-floor residential. If this were 2023 and we were talking about this for compliance in 25, I think there's a space where you could do that. I think with where we are now and the timeframe that we're working with, the socialization and the ability to sell a compliant bylaw is going to be challenging if it has a lot of complicated parts that go into setting up sort of nuances of the law.
But I'll tell you what, if we could do that mixed-use, I would be up here, I would personally, as a citizen, be super in favor of Lemister Shirley Road because that's what I'm honestly there, myself.
Well, that's what I was thinking, like, you go to Florida, you got a lot of those communities that talk about, we have like no real central place to go for lots of restaurants and that sort of thing. So it seems like there should be a win-win on this, not just housing for Boston. But the state would look at it as helping communities, look at building housing. And this is the legislature under Charlie Baker's initiative. And it was kind of, I'm just going to ram it down your throat because I'm about to be out of office and I've spent my time trying to convince people and nobody's buying in. So what, my, my take on this, and I don't want to take your time, Chris, but I agree with you, Lemister Shirley Road has a lot of potential. And whatever we do with this law, the town has an opportunity to create their own zoning, exclusive of MBTA communities, if that's something that people in general are going to be in favor of or championing. I think we do need more housing. I think we should build more housing. I think that under the MBTA communities or whatever law we use, housing that is in this density or a similar density up or down isn't attractive to families in Lunenburg and isn't cost-effective for families that live in apartments. In, in a general term, that's not going to, that, there's always exceptions to that rule. I think paper compliance in MBTA is the most effective and efficient way to do it. And I think the town has an opportunity to do a longer, more comprehensive, more inclusive design process around Lemister Shirley Road. My hope would be that the master plan reflects some of those thoughts, feelings and desires and that the town can use that as a basis to move that kind of thing forward.
I, I have a high regard for the priest to speak of, but I disagree. I, I think the Shirley Lemister Road area is one of the few places that you can have industrial development that makes sense. We already had a restaurant down that neck of the woods and didn't make our policy. I, I think that you have to pinch your shots. But the question I have, and I want to make sure I understand this because the scenario that you went through, which by the way, you did a hell of a job over here, is by doing, by telling that, which is in full force of effect right now, it kind of sort of takes care of the problem, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so how is that going to help and solve the problem statewide? It's not, because it's already there, right?
So, there's two, I can take, there's two arguments to that. One is David Bright. The other is Daniel. Lunenburg did our part to solve this issue 15 years ago when we built that, not built, but when we zoned that 40R district. So, we should get, I mean, so lay out the towns that haven't done this kind of hard work and there's plenty of them.
Yep.
That haven't been forward-thinking about housing to look to the future.
And it's not, it's not a crafty or sneaky thing. There's a provision within the regulations developed by Executive Office, housing little communities that allows communities who have compliant zoning districts or can produce a minor modification to an existing zoning district to be compliant, to file that with the office and be considered compliant. I will also say, the community that I work in, we did paper compliance, we, we didn't do paper compliance. We created a new zoning district over two developments that were just built within the last seven years. And we did it because that community did all of this groundwork over that time and created 500 units in, in less than 10 years. And so in order to, we were under a similar timeframe. I started in October in that community. We were due the following December to be compliant. And so, a little bit longer timeline, but we only had a town meeting in May. So it's about the same. We got it together, we got a law, we have our compliance letter from the state. So there's probably a dozen communities that I've talked to that have done similar things. They took areas that are already built, created an overlay zoning district, said, "Here you go." This is the zoning district. State said, "Oh, well, already that meets all our compliance." You are little, there's an Excel spreadsheet that you fill a bunch of data into from GIS. It does a bunch of that, of the napkin calculations for them and they use that and they say, "Great." You have the numbers, they read the bylaw, they say, "Yep, you know everything in here. The bylaws are regulations. Here's your fancy letter that you should put on the wall that says you're compliant. We're not going to come and take your chapter 90 or your chapter 70 or any grants that you have hanging out there and you go on your way and do your thing." So it's not, you're right, it doesn't create more housing, but it satisfies this law and it gives the town, if they're interested and willing to create more housing, they can look at 40 Lemister Shirley Way and they can say, "Look, we don't want to be constrained by this requirement within MBTA communities. We want to have a true mixed-use development." And maybe the restaurant house didn't work. How long ago was that, Dave? Because that was Padula and then it was, then it was House. And so at this point, you're talking about putting a captive housing audience onsite with retail, restaurant, service, whatever you put in there, entertainment. And you are creating the clientele for this area that you hope to embody with commercial. There's, I have significant concerns about the access and traffic in that area. But if the town is going to look at that as its own zoning district, they can also look at mitigation options, their own mass works grant or housing works grant to address some of those issues. And you offer the opportunity that you have access to a city of 60,000 people for use of this and people that are already traveling that way for retail and restaurant. So you're building off of something that's already established. And I think it would, it, it's not going to happen quickly. It's not gonna, you know, development like that takes five, seven, ten years to really come to life, but the town has to have the vision to do it. Uh, and I think what, and if all of us have heard over the past six, eight, twelve months is we don't have enough money, we don't bring enough receipts in. Housing isn't going to bring receipts in. Multifamily housing does better than single-family housing because there's less services and you're doing it on a denser area. But commercial growth is the only thing that is going to increase the town's tax levy without a significant pain to residents. And so finding something that's both multifamily and commercial that can add a tax-based component is critical. Uh, and I think that you can't do that within the MBTA communities. And I would put a plug in for requiring the maximum allowable ten percent affordable just to cover your bases.
What you've just explained to me, unless I'm missing something, is I, I think that would be the easiest sell for the town.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So I mean, you know, that, that makes sense. In, insofar as, uh, multi-family, uh, situation is concerned, Jay gave me this idea, who was near talking, that just give them, everybody a ta- a tax, uh, really a great tax program if they show proof of a vasectomy and, uh, and, and, and other things. I think that was a good idea. And I asked it from somebody else.
Go ahead, I know you have a question.
Like, Glenn, the cloud reservoir road. Um, to your, to your question, I, I, I didn't like a hard no on this law, but the previous speaker over here is, you know, that argument is what could bring me off the cliff. And I think it's important to frame this whole conversation around the fact that, you know, considering the ADU bylaw that we were just forced to, to pass at the recent town meeting, that just is, in my opinion, is overreached by those who we have elected to represent us at the state level, that they are interjecting themselves into our, um, historical right to control our own zoning. And I fully understand that the, uh, the law aspect of this, the state, I agree, has the authority to create these laws. But my question is, it is a rhetorical question. What is next? Uh, should we just cede all of our, um, zoning rights to the state? Because they know what Lunenburg should do with their land and they know the character that Lunenburg wants in their, in their town. So it's just my concern that we're, we're ceding our rights. And, uh, like I said, the previous speaker can, can take me off the cliff to buy us time because I also agree with a different, like, if we were to visualize, envision, uh, the, the property, say the Keating property, self, uh, Mr. Shirley Road, um, towards maybe the, the eastern, eastern side of Fort Pond Road, I could envision a beautiful complex there where there's restaurants and shops and, um, uh, residences. Very close proximity to what this law is purported to be, very close to the, the Shirley train station. Um, and I'm also not, I, I don't respond well to when, and it's been more prevalent or I've noticed it more in the last five years or so is scare tactics by government. And if we were to choose a different parcel that we actually liked and we were late to, to pass this bylaw, that does, the, the, the threat of the state bullying me does, is not a concern if we're prepared to be missed. So I, I'll stop.
Big. I just can respond to that. Jen, more than a town manager. So first, um, in my previous community to here, uh, we had, uh, MBTA zoning and we, we went for paper compliance. We zoned over the Worcester Country Club, uh, which unless the Worcester Country Club chooses to sell, was unlikely to ever produce anything. But, uh, just to quickly to that point of where's the state on that? The state did not call my office to ask me what was on the town meeting board. They had no conversations. I had no idea they knew. They called me the day after the town meeting was over and they called their town council to see whether or not we had passed this measure at our town meeting. So they are watching. I think that if we were three years ago or two years ago and the Milton case wasn't settled, I think that perhaps we might be having a conversation to say, sure, let's push back. But I think that the state and the law in Massachusetts is now pretty well settled and that the SJC has spoken. There was one procedural defect, uh, that can be cured very simply. I believe it already has been cured. And so we don't really have an option at this point. So it's really compliance and have, um, unfortunately.
Jen, didn't Holden push back to say again?
Yep. There were a number of communities.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yep. The advantage of the, well, I'd rather we weren't as under the gun as we are. The advantage of being on the tail end of this is wow, it's just laid out for us. We, we have a map, we can see the lay of the land from those who have gone before and spent the legal dollars, so we don't have to.
Right.
Um, great. Was that a question? Come back? No? Okay. I just want to get some voices. We haven't heard as much. Can you move a second?
Uh, yeah, Jason, nearly. Sunset lane. Uh, I just had a question. The type of housing that they're talking about, it's multi-dense housing?
Mm-hmm.
Down, uh, in the town already aligned on eleven or ten. And then also in Devon's. They have, and this is why I pick it out, I don't see what you're talking about. They built a whole, uh, community there to all the row houses. And I don't know if they call it, if they're townhouses or the condos or they consider them single residences. But when you talk about the schools, I have a, going home one day, I got stuck on the school bus and stopped down in the harbor. And like half the bus got off the, the kids. So I'm concerned that with this type of dense housing, when we say that there's a school, that there is a potential for there to be a lot of kids in the housing. But is that the type of housing they're talking about? How is that stacked together like that?
They're, they're talking about whatever we could fit. And right now, we're talking about fifteen units a acre. Uh, so the answer is however you could do that. Is that, is our townhouses a great way to do that? Yes, they are. Uh, do townhouses have to be super dense-feeling? Not necessarily. I, before I lived in Lun- Lunenburg, my wife and I actually lived at the Broad Cross Development, one of the Baventi Developments, uh, in Pittsburgh. We had a couple condos there over the years. Um, and I'll, I'll tell you, that development, you drive through it. I mean, it's townhouses upon townhouses. It also feels weirdly nice and charming and rural because it was thoughtfully designed. But can we guarantee things will be thoughtfully designed with this? No. We're zoning and then we're kind of leaving it up to them by and large.
But I think through zoning, you can create design standards and you can, and what, what we did in my community and what I've seen other communities do is you build these design standards in and you create a site plan approval or review process built into your MBTA community's bylaw overlay district. And so can you say exactly what it's going to look like? No. You can have open space required, but you can have building size required. You can do height maps, density requirements, architectural styles, those sorts of things. So you can really force their hand in any direction. So you don't get, you know, like a brutalist Soviet block development, um, and, and have it soften and, and be more in the character and the style of what you would want to see in a town.
I'm not convinced, I agree, I'm not convinced we can do this with our timeline and process ahead of us. Is my thought on that. Longer term, do I think we could do that with medium-density housing? I sure hope so, because I think we should. You can, you can tell me that I'm full.
I would hope that if you hired a consultant, that they can meet a minimum standard for that. And if they can't, then I think there's a, a really specific conversation to have with whoever's selling.
I don't disagree.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Could you expand upon the impact if this would have found our requirement for affordable housing? The rental first-hand ownership?
Yes, I can. Uh, the short answer is no. The long answer is none. Uh, yeah, I mean, there can be a ten percent impact, so I shouldn't really say none, because you can have, it is ten percent.
You can have up to ten percent fire rate without needing to do an economic feasibility study.
Well, because it'll increase your housing stock.
It'll increase your denominator. And if you don't increase the affordable, it will increase your, your, it won't increase your numerator. So when they figure out the subsidized housing inventory numbers, so in a roll of that, this I'm talking, but subsidized housing inventory is the state's made-up fake math, which is more made up than the math our children do at school, about how they achieve ten percent compliance with forty B. It's not a true, so affordable housing Matt mentioned earlier is a term of art to mean something that costs thirty percent of eighty percent of the area median income for metropolitan statistical area. We're part of the Monroe Street Garden here, NSA. So eighty percent of, uh, of the AMI, I think it's probably somewhere for a family of four between eighty-six and ninety-two thousand. Uh, it's been a while since I've looked at it, so I'm guesstimating. And then thirty percent of that is the annualized payments for housing. That includes things like utilities. And so in order to get there, the state says you have to have ten percent to comply with forty B and E and SA part. So if you build a hundred-unit, uh, apartment development that is for rent, only twenty-five percent of those need to meet the affordable standards.
Under forty B.
Under forty B. And then the town gets credit for all one hundred units, even though seventy-five of them are market rate at eighty to a hundred and fifty percent of AMI. If you do a hundred-unit subdivision where the units are for sale, under forty B, twenty-five percent have to be affordable. But only those twenty-five units would count towards that S H A number. So when the town says, I work in a town where at eleven point eight percent, realistically, our affordable units are seven point nine. Uh, Lunenburg is at, or was at nine point three four, nine point six four before the census numbers came out in twenty twenty. There aren't nine point four percent of the units that are affordable. So if, and to figure that out, what they do is they take the total number of housing units and then they use that as the denominator. And the numerator is the total number of units that meet the AMI or are, or are in a comprehensive permanent development, under forty B, that is for rent or forty R. Uh, so right now, tri-town and Rogers Way make up a massive bulk of the town's affordable units. So it would be folly for the town to create a bylaw that doesn't require a ten percent offset for any new units that agree. We do have inclusion, an inclusionary bylaw that says when you build over a certain number of units, you have to also build affordable. That's a little more challenging because people aren't building subdivisions because road construction and design is insanely expensive. And we have frontage everywhere, so they're just chopping up gray slots and throwing up houses. Uh, but that's the quick prior on how it was done.
A simple one. The, so if we, if we do adopt the two hundred and forty, that makes us more susceptible to forty B development?
No. It, it doesn't make any more or less. Your, your subsidized housing inventory percentage is what makes you more or less susceptible. And being under makes you more susceptible.
Would, it would make us more susceptible if we built two hundred and forty units and did not have affordable.
Correct.
Affordable housing. Because it would increase our housing stock, which would drive our percentage down.
Yeah.
For that. So it would be, it would be larger than the state part.
Can you talk about, uh, the elephant in the room specifically? I'm seeing the schools, sewer and water.
Yep. Uh, sewer, we are not required. We don't have to take sewer or water into consideration for the zoning. Um.
Does it have to pass by the law?
Yeah, yes. I mean.
And when they do, but not for our, not when we're zoning.
So not when you're zoning. Yeah. So that's sound like a paper zone.
Yeah.
Because if you, if you overlay in an area of town that does not have water or sewer, you effectively limit your, your density now to like one minute or ten thousand per feet. That's not a lot of time. So you, you'd be effectively dropping the density way more. And I don't know if they require you, that's the question I have, on situations like that. Do they require you to take that metric into account? Uh, we were, I know in the original discussions, the thought was they were going to. Town council says no. So you can still say that they could build fifteen units and able to develop far more. Because sewer and water could make it there. And again, it's, I, I think we all need to be aware, these changes have come from the state. We do not have evidence that mandatory changes are going to stop. One of the reasons we've done as well as we have with a lot of these mandatory changes. But I, 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 and I know I sound like a broken record, but it's because we were forward-thinking about housing in the past. And I say that because if I remain planning board chair, I'm going to want us to keep looking forward-thinking, otherwise we're going to get hit hard by some of these. We have some options for paper compliance. And I, personally, I think that's valuable because it lets us be. Oh, that's, nope, fine.
But I have that bird.
Fun fact, this year's dead. I only have one year worth of battles. Mostly works, except for when it fails, when I'm standing still. For some reason, they don't want me finding letters anymore. I don't know. Um, but, I mean, if I were, if I were making this decision for the town by myself, I would go paper compliance, but not so we can do nothing. But because that frees us up to be a lot more thoughtful. It gives us some time and frees us up to otherwise use some good areas to be thoughtful about what we're going to do. So we can try and stay ahead of the curve and with commandments come down from on high, we can pivot easily. And thank you for your patience.
Uh, I'd like to say so. It sounds like we want, some, or definitely want multi-use, fancy housing things. So that's good industrial, that's good something. The easiest way to provide this is to be paper clients because it doesn't get us anything that we want if we were to build somewhere else. So it would take away from industrial mixed use. It also wouldn't give us any affordable housing. That would make us compliant with affordable housing. So we have to, to get another thought for that and something else with that. Uh, because townhouses, condos, complexes, they're all very expensive. They're not any less expensive than single-family houses. Especially if you start considering HOA cost, which is like three hundred to five hundred dollars a month. It's seed, single-family houses, houses. So, and if not, it's gonna be like a family. So I would agree that choosing any of these options to like actually make more housing wouldn't be good for many reasons. And I'm, I'm being curious how many people support the paper compliance one, because a lot of people seem to. And, uh, instead of like, you know, random people, you know, where I kind of put it in there, but I'm, I'm curious like how many people would want to support the paper compliance? Because it seems the best way to go. It's the easiest way to navigate.
I am wanting to stop holding the room to see. As long as you do so, you have the understanding, now, of course, this is, you can just walk out and leave whenever you want, right? Like you're not being held hostage. Um, but I would hate for us to straw poll it and have that shut down further discussion. Because I'm always a little wary about tyranny and majority. You know, okay, we like it and then let's stop talking. And that can shut down good ideas. So I'm totally cool straw-polling the room. I think it's a good data. It's good data for the planning board as well. But hopefully we can do it with the understanding this is not me shutting down discussion. Um, but sure, I'm curious. Uh, but, sure, I curiosity. If you're thinking, hey, planning board, paper compliance is the way to go, just increase Youngs Row, uh, Trytown, to 26 units an acre, be done. If that's what you're feeling, could you just give a thumbs up in a pretty obvious way? So, we see that some of the room, it ain't all of it. And I think that's useful. I think it might be worthwhile, and again, if you're not properly speaking out loud, write those ideas down, okay? Get them on a card, I'll take them, and then we still have them for the planning.
May I have a question for you?
Yeah.
Is the planning board's, do you, right? Do you think the planning board's gonna bring one option to town meeting, or multiple options?
Uh, we're going to bring one option to town meeting. That is our agreement with the consultant. And I think bringing multiple options to town meeting is a way for us to almost certainly end up with nothing. Uh, but regardless, our contract is for them to develop one bylaw fully for the town. Uh, what, what other things do people like? How else would people like to handle this? Please.
Thank you, John. I, I have a particular interest in affordable senior housing. And I think it's a great low cost. I don't know if the town, we're not, we bring in people who already had their respect weeks.
Or, no.
Neither many more. And at the same time, you're not putting loads on the school systems. And what we're doing is we're basically collecting revenue, we offer and want all of these homes. And from what I saw when I was over at the assessments office, there's a lot of folks that are kind seniors, who are getting at the edge of what they can support, whether it's the house itself, or the taxes, or whatever. So why would we try and create a more of a senior development with the network? It doesn't create the load for the town, and we, if it's affordable, right, that component, we, we pick up the 40B piece of it, right?
So, I, I can answer that question. Uh, and, like, I, sorry, because you are, you are a planner. I play one on TV. But it's, so, something I thought I should have included, and I'm gonna add in to the deck for Wednesday. Can't be, MBTA communities cannot be age restricted. So what we're talking about here cannot be extra affordable housing. Again, they're not targeting affordable housing. It can't be age restricted. Their goal, the state's goal, is to have more family-friendly housing. Again, with the understanding, in Lunenburg, this isn't family-friendly the same way. Not that it couldn't be, but people with kids don't come to Lunenburg to live 15 families to a day. Um, so that we can't, is the answer.
I guess, my question is, is where do you get that idea that families are coming, or wanting to come to Lunenburg? In these living houses? Because my sister's in her twenties right now, and beginning to start a family.
Mm-hmm.
And she, and her and her peers, living in Manchester, commuting, because they can't find apartments. And she's looking for apartments to raise a family right now, because it's all that she can afford. And some people in her peer group are living in mobile homes, maybe transient, going into Walmarts, and just different ways that they're trying, that they're bunking together for nights, like, lots of young people living together, and apartments to afford it. So, I don't know, I guess, when you say there was a statistic that is showing that families are going to want to come here, uh, and that, and that is, again, to talk about the schools, we're really unfunded in the schools, and I'm, uh, I have kids in the schools, and that's why I'm concerned about this, because getting to the school, the school picked up my transportation, where I live happens to be by the home, and I moved from Pittsburgh to get away from that kind of scene. And now I'm looking at this, and I'm wondering, I, I see the kids get off the bus at Trytown, and like you said, it's the majority of the bus. So how are you going to think that families really are going to come to Lunenburg, because it's all 40B?
So, I can flesh that out a little bit more, and I might actually turn, then turn to Jen, our town manager, for some extra info as well.
Okay.
Because she's more knowledgeable than me on this. But, um, speaking very broadly, what I'm not trying to say is no families want it, because that's flat on truth. Uh, but, in general, in these kinds of communities, overall, this kind of housing tends to pull in, for the most part, people who can afford this level of housing, who also tend to not have kids. Now, they may have kids while there, but they're also already at that income level, they can afford this kind of housing. Because this isn't low, I want to say low, I mean, this is not affordable housing with that technical term. This also isn't generally affordable, it's more affordable than our single families. That doesn't mean, I mean, look at renting this town, averaging 3,500 bucks. I got news.
That's high, that's high enough.
I, I believe-
Every place is, I think, 2,800 thereabouts.
Oh, is that it? I, I-
That's more than a mortgage in some places.
Every place is, rockets arrive now, but it's someplace-
Like a single-family house, but it's, you know, the thing is, it's inventory too.
Mm-hmm.
And we're living in unprecedented times.
Right, so that historical shouldn't even matter with the future, because there's so many people looking for housing right now, and a lot of them have families, and they're not even in an apartment, because that's all they can get. Not what they want.
But that's, it's an inventory-driven market right now, and there's such a contrast when you go location to location. Like, just by example, on the for-sale market right now in Clinton, I was looking for someone, two houses on the market, that's it. Right now in Lunenburg 16. So there's a real contrast. You know, but in rentals, it's a whole different ballgame. People are driven to the rental market, they can't afford to buy a house, but now there's more people considering buying a house. Because rents are driven so enormously high, you know, like Adam said, I mean, it's, it's much as a mortgage payment, or what some of us have, a mortgage payment, so.
I think the rise is higher than that now, because-
Yeah, that would, right, right.
Because I've been trying to convince my mother to come up from Florida, and the price is not there. But I want to turn to Jen.
I think, so, if we want local data, I think that, you know, we can certainly reach out to some of the property management companies and actually see what those impacts are, but typically, as everybody has kind of said, we're not talking about any subsidy in an apartment building, in a bedroom community such as Lunenburg, where if somebody's building this, they're most likely to build as high a floor area as they can, build as high a luxury as they can. Statistically, the people that rent luxury units in communities like Lunenburg do not have school-aged children. Some elementary, you might get one or two families, but it's, you're paying more to raise your family in dense housing than you would to be living in a single-family ranch. And so they're just not, I just choose it.
I'm sorry, I just don't understand, like, how being forced to build that is how they get it.
We're not being forced to build that again, we're being forced to zone, but you know someone's gonna come and build.
No, I don't, I don't think so.
I, I think it depends, I think that it depends on what the community's trying to do. The community can put this zoning in an area that will attract development. You see what that is? So if we put it at 40 Leinster Shirley, of that, or Rogers, those are going to be the most likely to attract development. And we need to be mindful that that will be, we are, we are welcoming the developers to come in. Paper compliance, different story. So in order to buy, somebody would have to buy that, or they'd have to renovate, tear it down, to get that density. And isn't Trytown as built at about 15 acres? Are you 15 minutes an acre?
Uh, I think it is 17.
Right now. Right now.
It's, right now, I believe right now it's 17 an acre. That was, I said 14 there, but my previous number said 17, so I'm gonna keep going with that.
So you're about that.
I'm sorry, I think to build on that, and I think despite its name, well, luxury is not a luxury apartment. It's a comprehensive permit development that limits the profits of the developer, so they build it to, building code as cheaply and easily as possible. And that's the game of, of comprehensive unit development. I think also, what, what your, your concern is, is families moving in. And I think to echo that, there's no guarantee that families won't move in. But I think if you look at a dense development, and you build, we'll use 100 again, because it's an easy round number. If you build 100 apartments, or 100 single-family homes, statistically, the number of families in the apartments is going to be significantly, if not exponentially, smaller than the single-family homes. And right now, all the building in Lunenburg is single-family homes, with the exception of those massive duplexes over on Mass Ave. So, yes, you will get some influx, but I also think realistically, what you see is it offers opportunities for folks who are aging out of their homes, to remain in the community in a luxury apartment setting, and open up single-family homes for additional families. So it changes the inventory, it changes the perspective, and you see a more natural and reasonable, consistent flow of population than you do now. Because when we bought our house a little over 10 years ago, it was, all of the older folks in town were either passing away, or didn't have anywhere to go, so they were out, they were leaving. And there was a massive turnover. And one of my children is in the largest grade in the schools. They had to hire extra teachers, it was just a whole mess. And part of the reason is, at that time, there was a large influx of families, because a lot of single-family homes came up quickly. If you are offering people opportunities to leave on their own terms at a more reasonable scale, you get less swing, and you get a little more consistent. Your, your change in population stays in a more even, uh, curve.
I, I don't know, I have just like a lot of questions that I might not understand completely, but I guess the way Massachusetts is forcing the zoning of anything, people are gonna want to put in the more expensive luxury things, but that's not what you're saying, being family-friendly, so like, I don't understand why.
Because family-friendly, yeah.
It's a, it's a- You can't restrict it to age.
Yeah.
So there was a period in, around the turn of the century, where senior developments and adult developments were the plague for a lot of communities to increase housing stock and not affect schools. So there's a fair number of communities on the South Shore that have communities that have covenants that are 18 plus. So you can't have residents who are under the age of 18. There was a huge push to build senior developments, 55 plus, and they went up all over the place, and they fell flat on their face for a while, and then the Cape came around and said, oh, build them all here, and everybody moved to the Cape. And, so, the, the state is saying, you can't put these restrictions upon, but it doesn't mean that you have to build a playground, an arcade, a game, or it has to be like this resort for families to come move to. It just means you can't put legal restrictions on that, you see.
Okay, it just seems like they're giving the opportunity for like rich people-
They are, they are.
That's how I see it. I don't see any options for, like, the kids like my sister, who are just, so, I don't know. And I actually know, like, we're out in the area, just trying to pull out an electric app, I'm sitting there for five minutes sometimes with traffic. And I can't imagine, like, the roads, the streets, it's just a mess, like, the the potholes, and there's no sidewalks, and any more traffic over there, I, I just don't see those, so I think more. I don't know, I don't even know, so.
So, if your concern is that this kind of development-
Yeah.
That, that, it sounds like you don't like.
I don't know, I don't like any of it.
Okay, well, then if you don't like any of it, my recommendation is paper compliance at Trytown. Because that's the one that lets us effectively put a pause. But again, I would, the only caution I would give us is, we can't do that and rest on our laurels. Because if you just wait for the next person to fix it, to, because we see these issues cropping up, the problems we have in town come from previous generations, not, I don't mean boomers, I mean, I mean, previous iterations of town residences and town government not being willing to look ahead to address issues. I think paper compliance, if you don't like what you're hearing, I don't like what the state's doing either. Paper compliance is our way to put a kibosh on this, what meeting needs, what meeting requirements, rather, and then have thoughtful discussion about what are our needs as a community, and how we gotta address those. So, in your instance, I would recommend, for what you're saying, I think paper compliance-
That's what I'm meaning towards out of the floor, but, yeah.
And again, paper compliance isn't sneaky, we already did the work. This is saying, go us from 15 years ago, good job past us, present us gets a little break for the work we did. And what I heard-
So, yeah, I think it was the first 40 acres, it was. I mean, we were really depressed on that one. Uh, we were the first community of that town, so we, we should-
We should take credit for it, and by way of information to sort of ease your mind, that's a $50 million development, and it's still owned by the people who built it. So you could zone over that, and I don't think I've ever met a developer that said, I'm gonna take out $50 million to build 20 units.
Exactly what I was gonna say, it's an economic decision, development is always about economics. So in 30 years, the life cycle of those boomers is gone, because someday, someday they're gonna get economically viable, and rip them down, rebuild at a high density, possibly, but the time is likely not now. It's likely not, close by.
So I do think that, I think, Chris, the idea of the paper compliance to me is all, either say no, because I think Beacon Hill Town in Lunenburg would do, or paper compliant, that should be our, our option. But on the top right there, I think there's, I think there's options of doing something in zoning outside of MBTA, to make something really attractive there, where you can get houses that people can start their families in. Right? I won't say affordable housing, because that, that's like-
It's housing that's affordable, it's housing that's at a scale, it's-
Right, so I would, I would look at like, I think someone maybe mentioned this, I'm, I'm, because like the loudest, and well, maybe I was, but I mean- But like on Debs, that Grant Road where they put in like little small, like how I grew up homes, that would, something like that in there, with restaurants, and maybe an old-time movie theater, or, you know, just something like that would be pretty nice for this town, where people can start their families in, or downsize too. So, again, I'm for paper compliance, uh, just to get Beacon Hill off our path on this one issue.
Chris, you'll want to talk, you'll want to talk about the future of mixed-use development in town, I'll tell you what, I'm a super open ear and happy to applaud on that, because I, there's a lot of funding that we took for granted for a long time, that it turns out we, we were taking for granted. And there's a lot of assumptions we made about funding that we can't count on anymore. To that end, personally, I want to see us become much more fiscally resilient, but that's a 10 to 20-year plan. But if we don't start now, it's always 10 to 20 years away. If we start now, then in a decade plus, we could be in a much better place, as we start to think about these things, bring them alive.
And I think everybody who doesn't like what Beacon Hill is doing, is putting their thumb on Lunenburg. I, I'm not gonna disagree on a lot of ways, in a lot of ways with that, but we can't solve that here. That's a matter of KQ legislative delegation and open that bylaw, and, 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 you know, I'm, everyone does their own thing, everyone has their own way of approaching it, but starting full guns blazing is gonna get you just run out of the rapport in the senate's office. And having thoughtful discourse, having reasonable, uh, discussion about what your concerns are and how it is, isn't necessarily gonna change their mind, but it may help them think a little bit more the next time they take a vote or decide to just box or bill. I know Chris is able to be able when he wants to. I, I don't know you very well, Glenn, so I can't, I can't say one way or the other.
And it is a very contentious issue throughout the state, and there, I meant to look it up, but there's several towns that have said no in full defiance. up, but there's several towns that have said no in full defiance. Last year was around thirteen or so towns, but you know, it's just important because it's such, it is, it's such a divisive issue, divisive issue throughout the state, and it's literally going to be one of the top issues for the gubernatorial campaign, that the ones running already are already taking sides. I mean, this is a huge issue, and it's one of the fundamental problems, and I have reached out to our, or at least the area rep for Reservoir Road, that, you know, is not in support of it, and a lot of them, I'll tell you what they're gonna say, is they weren't in the legislature when it was passed, so they kind of sidestep it, but will say that they, they are in favor of it, but it's, it's a really big issue, and it's, it goes to that fundamental concern I have about those who we have elected to represent us, is that they double down every step of the way. The more people, the more the voters push back, the more grants they put on the table that you're gonna lose. And they, they're just real threatening about the whole process in the face of a lot of people, a lot of voters that are not supporting it.
All right.
Question, do you know what Town Shirley is, or have you heard in terms of any claim by them?
I do not know what Shirley is.
Sure, we'd argue that would be compliant. They would have been...
Yeah.
Because they have a station.
Okay, all right, just curious.
We have some extra leniency, which is good for us.
Right.
So I am gonna, we have a half hour until before we're done come heck or high water, because then we move to the room, and this building actually gets to close, and we get to go home, repair. Other thoughts? I hear, I've heard a lot about, so what I'm gonna encourage us to do now, there's a lot of agreements that were upset with the state about this, one of them. I am gonna have us table further comments on that front. I agree with you. However, that doesn't impact, being angry with the state doesn't impact the choice we make. I mean, we could elect and say, let's try to stake it to them and not comply. I personally think that, while you might disagree, but I think discussion needs to be about that. If the answer is, we don't like what the state's doing, um, yeah, maybe say yes, but for the options we have, and there are these options, but if you were to say, why don't we split it this way, we could do that too. These were the recommendations from the consultants that made the most sense, um, based on our research, just because we weren't talking about, let's take Rogers Way and do it. I did bother coming to you and saying, you know, we could do Rogers Way at twenty units per acre, and then we could have over seven hundred new units right in Wayall. That was not our option, but that's because they gave us choices, not because we shouldn't. Other thoughts or other questions?
I have one. I asked for three things, schools, sewer, and water, and not one person has said anything about water.
Again, it's not, what is your question about water? Because it's not required.
Well, I, I have a pretty good idea about water, but there are, there are some areas that water and sewer will be very critical to have, right? And, and I'm not sure that there are availabilities of those two things. So it could be a problem, that's all I'm saying.
The issue is agnostic of those.
Yeah.
What? It's agnostic, it doesn't require, they don't have to be there.
So...
So what are they gonna do, have cans?
That, I mean, so let's, let's just Shirley Road is a good example, if we were to talk this one through a little more. Leinster Shirley Road does not have water, does not have sewer. Now, it's real close to water and sewer lines, but it doesn't have it. Not on its front edge, it'd have to come in from Leinster in that direction, okay? It's still a viable choice. Could, so if we zone it, it doesn't matter that there's no water and sewer there, okay? Doesn't matter. We can zone it. And then, it's up to whoever wants to develop it to work out the math to make that development work, um, maybe with a ton of wells, may, more likely bringing in water and sewer from outside, like getting water and sewer to that location. But the good news is, we, doing this decision, don't have to worry about that. That's an issue for the developer, and if the developer wants to come to the town and say, hey, extend water and sewer here, then that's for the sewer commission, that's for the water district to figure out if and how that would work. We don't have to worry about it for this discussion. Now, to be frank, again, Rogers Way, you're probably gonna see development there a lot faster because there's water and sewer. That expansion's gonna be easier than anywhere else, so you can be aware of that, but that doesn't mean we don't need to have it there. Does that answer your question, Gary?
Um, I just sort of, not really. The next step is this, we say, well, it's, you know, we don't have to worry about it, and it can happen. This, those two things are extremely important, and there's no real way that we can say that we can do that. Leinster and Pittsburgh, you know, they don't have capacity, and this PFAS situation, I'm gonna tell you, is absolutely catastrophic.
Yeah.
But is it to comply by zoning, or do you have to actually produce a development?
Um, we just need to zone.
That's it.
Yeah, that's it, all we have to do is zone. So, we could zone Leinster Shirley Road, and it turns out, if it is not economically and politically feasible to get water and sewer there, I'll tell you what, I don't think that's ever getting developed. We've still met our requirements, we've done what we can do, and the state says, good job, Lunenburg, and we pat ourselves on the back, and then go about the rest of our business.
But the problem doesn't go away.
The problem of meeting MBTA communities...
No, that goes away.
That goes away. The problem of more housing in town does not, you're right. And that's why, again, that's why I opened by saying, do we need more housing?
Might as well tell us.
Yeah, we do, really. It doesn't mean, it doesn't mean that getting that housing through MBTA communities is the right way to do it, but I want us to be aware of that, because I don't want anyone walking away from this thinking, well, Matt said we don't need housing, because you're gonna be real surprised with me in the future when I say, we gotta do something about housing. I got, Dave, I could talk to you all about options we have for housing in town, but I think it'd be real positive, but that's enough of this meeting.
Yeah.
Other questions, thoughts?
One last comment.
I'll hold you to it, Kathy.
Okay.
No.
No, um, Trytown, you say Trytown is also a separate building that was built just in the past, how many years ago?
Five.
Five?
Twenty-seven.
And that's over fifty-five, so I think a lot of people aren't even aware of that. And it's a wonderful building, we had a family member live there, beautiful building, brand-new.
Where is this?
Right over next to Trytown.
It's part of Trytown.
It's part of Trytown.
It's all in the development, all shaped...
Like on the roof.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well...
It was just wonderfully done.
That's gonna cause you to comply as well, isn't it?
Yeah, so no, I mean, there we have an issue, effective, you can, you said that would cause compliance.
No, it would not.
It would not?
No, the, the compliance on the zoning bylaw that you brought up was on the ground.
Oh, okay.
You could take a chunk of Will from Electric Ave to Rogers Way, and you could figure out that you could build two-hundred-and-forty units in there over the seventy-five single-family homes on a quarter acre. The state can give you compliance, and no one's ever gonna build it, because no one's gonna build seventy-five, no one's gonna buy seventy-five homes at three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred thousand dollars a pop to build some condos in a town that's gonna be hostile. Uh, what's on the ground currently in existing conditions is irrelevant. The town I work in, we sold over development that had infrastructure, didn't have no of that.
Great.
Can you still take credit for the units? Yeah, it exists.
Because you said that there was a time, like the fact that we did the forty yards so long ago, was the reason why we could take credit?
It's when the bylaw was written, not when the units were built, because what they didn't want people doing was writing forty R, which requires twenty-five percent affordable as a way to comply with MBTA communities, and, and sort of spreading around that ten percent and...
Okay. And great, also the time on that, yeah, is like, is like either twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-two.
So it's spread.
Yeah, no, so we, yeah, it just needs to predate the...
And then it's the error.
Yes. They, they want to say, like, they wanna be able to say, good job, you already did this, not, good job, you're trying to sneak your way past this bylaw. Okay, I'm fine with that, because we already did, sounds good to me. Other thoughts? Please.
Yeah, I, I look at this kind of in a different, I was having to worry about solving the socio-economic, whatever, problems of the community or the state in order of what's good business for Lunenburg, you know, especially when we consider these school rides off. And, you know, if I look at those, and being, you know, the Leinster Shirley, seems like it's a really nice spot, but the high-end condos, and you can get as much tax revenue as you can for a unit. And then Trytown's already mixed level, ain't consuming your housing, why wouldn't you build all more of that there? You know, why, why would you pull that into even paper compliance or... And Rogers Way, I'd be a little nervous about building, it's not over my Mackies, you know?
That's with cavities.
Oh, oh, that's a low... Okay, yes, then you're, you're putting more, more crowd into that, still, I would, I would think we'd wanna go for lower density there, so you're not adding a lot of, a lot of units and more traffic.
Well, we have to go at about fifteen there, so...
It seems like things are specifically suited for three different applications, and not, not a mixed scene of awe. And then, you know, don't, don't, you know, we're, we're worried, but don't forget a ride when it was, was before that. That was most, that was similar place was supposed to be owner occupied.
Yeah.
No kidding. And then the two-thousand-eight concession hit, and they came back and said, we can't sell any of these for the price we wanna sell them, and the board gave permission to go to rental.
Well, the board can't control ownership of them, so it's patently illegal, and the land uses the same whether it's owned or rented.
Yeah.
So whatever the initial intent was, the development's the same whether people were renting or owning.
But I'm just saying, you know, we're looking right now at a good strong market where with more and more inventory being built, we could get into a housing glut and pricing come down, where then families move into higher right things they wouldn't, wouldn't think of selling. But that's just when I look at that, I say three separate uses.
Yeah, and I think...
They aren't interchangeable.
We could choose to interchange them, but I agree with you, that they are different, right? I mean, look, if you're saying, Matt, I want more medium-density housing, and we, we need it and we need it right the heck now, and we need to compel the town to allow it, if that is where you are, and that is your most important thing, it's a fair view. I don't know that I agree, but I get the logic. You want Rogers Way, okay? There's water, there's sewer, there's a park nearby, great. If you're saying, I want more medium-density housing, but I don't want it in Wayall, where we always put medium-density and similar housing, you want Leinster Shirley, even though that's with the understanding that water and sewer could become an issue, but that really isn't an insurmountable issue. It would take time, it would take money, but it's doable.
But does it, Leinster is, what's the industrial property there, by you?
I mean, you're talking about an excavator. What's, what's the difficulty of attracting a construction building by there?
Uh, the, there's still cost, and there's, and, and there's also making sure that it's, if it's from our water, if it's from our water district, I don't know if that's in the water district off the top of my head, if it's not, it would have to be expanded. If it is, the water district would still have to vote to extend service, sewer. So the thing is, none of this is, is not sure, it's not undoable, but it's not sure. If you're saying, I don't want any more development in town, or if you're saying, I think we do need development, but we need to be more thoughtful than this, then you probably want to do the paper compliance option for Trytown, get credit for the good work we did, and either dig in our heels and hope by right development won't happen, I got bad news about that, but you can hope what you want, or do it and say, now we gotta figure out what we are going to do, so that we're not at the whim of developers, we're guiding them to build the town we want. Because building's gonna happen, that's, that's law. Again, Trytown, Rogers Way, if you are really worried about messing up Trytown, and you hear from a lot of professionals here, as I've heard, that's not gonna happen, but if you're really worried about that, then we could do Trytown with a modest development zoning for modest development at Rogers Way, forty more units.
I'll also note that the state has discouraged communities with split apartments.
Yeah.
In, in, as far as the zoning.
You can, uh...
I understand that you can, I'm just saying that they discourage communities with split apartments.
Yeah. And the only reason I recommend this split is because our contractors, community scale, felt comfortable recommending this to us, they've gotten plenty of communities through, so they feel this split can be handled. But you're right, that isn't really what the state wants, but is what it is.
I know you just said that they don't recommend it, but why isn't there an option of doing the Young's Road, um, and forty Leinster Way split that you just did with the Trytown Rogers Way? So like, you do it on paper, but then you reserve that other squad for how Lunenburg wants to do it? Not by rights only that you're talking about, that developers might just come in and take it?
Split which two again?
The top two. So you're complying on paper, but then you're also having zoning over there to do...
My recommendation for one, is because any MBTA community zoning in that section could get in the way of more thoughtful development we could do there.
Okay, so if you zone it, it has to be MBTA?
Yeah, well, we can't then say, start requiring other things on top of it, and per, again, I'm, when I talk about this aspect, I gotta be clear, I have an opinion as a citizen, and that's my opinion as a citizen, I'd like to think it's an informed one, but people can disagree with me on it, even, I mean, my argument would be that I think that site is gonna give... Even, I mean, my argument would be that I think that site is gonna give us more tax dollars in the long run and be a more compelling development. Makes use. Again, because that's, well, like restaurants, shops, entertainment, second, third floor apartments or ownable condos, however. But then you've got, I mean, the young people who can't afford to move into Ludenberg and might not want to move into the cowbase town that they grew up in necessarily. Well, they can move in above, above a fun bar here at Bowling Alley. That could change things a little bit. And frankly, if you're telling me there's a fun bar next to a bowling alley over in the corner of town, that, that's one more thing I can do on a Friday night. So, and I think there's a lot of people who can, who hear around who want more of that activity in Ludenberg. And this on the road, they can pull people from Shirley and pull people from Leamster as the name might indicate, only better for business without driving them through every side running town to get there. But as has been alluded to, Leamster Shirley Road is good. Ain't perfect, there's some issues there. If you know the intersection of Reservoir Road, you know exactly one of the issues but not the only one. Not that we can't find that.
Makes our thinking.
Great.
Are you hoping to do this as an oval district?
What's that?
The board looking to do this as an oval district? Rather than do zoning?
Yeah.
O, oval.
I need you to be louder right now, sorry.
Is the board looking to do, provide the MBTA as an oval district? Versus setting actually zoning?
That's what we, yes.
So that's important for everybody in the room because if you were to say, for example, zone 40 Leamster Shirley Road as an oval district for MBTA, it doesn't negate the underlying zoning that's there. So developers have options to do a development under it. Current zoning is just industrial or utilize the oval zoning conditions. But if you don't put the MBTA in there, nothing will pollute the town from doing a new zone, oval, mixed use zone, oval, just like what we're talking about here. So if you want something like that, though, you should not put MBTA zoning on it because it will encourage developers to come get you another option.
Now, I'm gonna walk back my statement about, about half or a quarter of my statement, which is unless our consultant gives us a concrete reason why we would have to do it as a rezoning rather than oval district. I don't know of any reason that would be the case, but I, I watch my words carefully as a non-planner, even though the planners there shaking their sense of saying that.
Well, I think it's harder to do that because we're actually seeing that's changing some of the underlying current zoning rights. So if you were a rezone, that's a harder thing to do than this to give them to use property more often.
And frankly, I don't ever want to eliminate the option for industrial. Well, we can put industrial because if you end up with industrial, congratulations. That's a big fistful of dollars for the town without having to spend a lot on services. That always feels real nice. But again, that, that property has been available for sale for 25 years as industrial. And we notice it isn't industrial yet.
Don't you need a lot of money for industrial?
Um, it depends, it depends on what you're doing. But regardless, again, the topology of that property, modern industrial wants big flat spaces. That isn't, it isn't nice and flat at all.
Road's a big issue too.
Yes, but the problem with this particular parcel is not as much the roads. I was speaking with the owner, it's, he's like, "I've had it for sale. No one wants it because you can't put a giant box on it that you fill with whatever machinery you need." I see that we have about seven minutes left. What I'm gonna ask you to do now, okay? Is if you have further questions, please write them down on a card and note this is a question you need an answer to. And I'll make sure we can get one to you ASAP. If you don't have more questions, but you have thoughts that you really wanna make sure the planning board gets and you either didn't voice them or you did voice them, but you really wanna have our help, write it down. Please, give us as much information as you're willing to inform our decision, okay? We have, again, about seven minutes left. If you have other questions, I'm happy to circulate on tables and chat. But I wanna give, I wanna make sure people are writing if they haven't gotten anything else, so we can get it through. So anything else, not so much questions about this, but anything else broadly you need from me tonight?
I think we need to give you a round of applause.